Meeting of the City of Salome Springs Planning Commission to order, roll call please.
Sung. Montgomery.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You've all received the minutes from our last planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February fourteenth regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. First item on tonight's agenda is preliminary development permit PP twenty-three dash oh one. This permit was tabled on February the fourteenth. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So before you is the preliminary plat that was tabled last time. In addition to a briefing on the annexation permit, what you're looking at is an extension of Phase Four and Five of the Heritage Ranch subdivision. This will be adding sixty-three new single-family lots on approximately eighteen point four seven acres. In addition, as I mentioned, this will be annexed in the city going to the board next Tuesday, actually, on the March twenty-first, and they're requesting that come in as the R-two zone. Here you see the site plan as proposed. Some notable features you'll see is the extension of West Cattlemen from Phase Three of the same development. This will connect Don Hill Road, which will provide another ingress egress for houses that currently under construction in Phase Three. The detention for this subdivision are located on two lots on the southwest corner, and I'll circle those right there. I also want to specifically draw your attention to the top right corner of the project site. I'm going to blow that up there for you to give better clarity what's going on. So as you read probably from the staff report, staff has some concerns with this area in terms of the grade difference needed for the two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac compared to the existing house on the north side of these lots. The proposed lots will be considerably higher with about approximately a seven-foot exposed foundation walled for the new proposed houses due to that rise of the lot line as it comes in. The applicant has added a restriction, as you can see in the red clouded information from the preliminary plat, that will prevent two-story houses from being constructed, which will help cut down a little bit on some of that visual impact. So just digging into that a little bit more, these photos will better illustrate kind of the condition and why we're requesting it. So at the top left, you'll see the existing condition of the property to the, this is the stream northern edge of the subdivision, right, two-two-seven-four Don Hill Road, right where Don Hill starts making to the incline at the peak of the hill there. So the rise will be increased with the proposal, when the proposal is graded to accommodate the proposed cul-de-sac, which is being kept more or less level with a proposed entrance off of Cattlemen Lane. So as you can see, that will be building up. So the bottom-left example is just a picture of what would happen essentially with houses, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with that, the houses that are built on a slope or incline where the basement is like a walkout basement, whereas the front of the house is at a different level than the back. This is a two-story home, so obviously the, what's being built wouldn't go quite that high up, but it just gives you an idea of sort of what that visual impact will look like. So obviously requiring a fence is not enough to address this problem due to the limits of the allowed fence height, which is only about seven feet. So staff looked at another similar issue of grade differences between the existing properties and the proposed development, and an idea of planting Leland Cypress trees, which suggests as a condition of approval. Staff believes a similar mitigation will work in this case. You'll see the proposed trees on the right. These are quick growers. They grow up about three feet a year. We would require that these trees are planted with the approval of the final plat, and the developer has agreed to the solution. The trees will be planted no greater than seven feet apart, which will require approximately fifty trees. And these will be, and the total boundary distance will be about three hundred and forty-five feet. The trees will provide essentially what we would call live fence, a green wall, if you will, to virtually screen all activity on the lots on the south side of the existing house. And just to add, this will not just be along the line here with the trees, but also along that western boundary. So the rear of the house would also have screened from the houses that are built up along the back end as well. So as you know, for all preliminary plats, we do go through the approval criteria now, just so you're aware of what we're looking at specifically for the approvals. We are showing the R-two zone per the pending annexation. You'll see the lots are meeting the minimum width and lot size for R-two. Sewer is available, and the applicant did comply with the requirements of the plat approval process set out in the subdivision regulations. Under the reasonableness of the proposal on the peace and enjoyment of neighboring properties, we feel that if the applicant does abide by suggested conditions of approval, this criterion will be met. The proposal is three point four six units per acre, which falls below the max density allowed in the R-two zone district. Traffic will increase by approximately six hundred and two vehicles per day. However, this increase is not to a level to interfere with the existing neighborhood quality of life standards, to a degree considered a disruption to the peace and enjoyment of the area. In terms of the neighborhood compatibility and context, that's criteria two there. The future land use map calls out for neighborhoods one in the area. The proposal is consistent with this designation. Neighborhood ones allows for two to six dwelling units per acre, and at three point four six, the proposal density is consistent with the land use plan's guidance. As I mentioned earlier, staff is suggesting, and the applicant provides specialized screening in the effort to address the visual compatibility issues with the existing house in the north of the proposal. For criteria three, generally, staff finds that no aspects, which would substantially burden neighborhood land uses. Lots are sized similar to earlier phases, this being logical extension to the east of the existing subdivision. The issues of lot grading could be applied here as well, but as we have mentioned, our suggested condition will address that. In terms of infrastructure, you'll see that there are water and sewer lines in the area, and these are rated to a level to accommodate the proposed development. For the next two criteria, we do feel that the project meets the level of sound planning for the city's growth. The final phases of the development will pose unacceptable impacts on Don Hill Road and its logical extension to the subdivision by virtue of the approved stubout streets. That would be Cattlemen on the east side of Phase Three, as well as the stubout for Lexington coming up from the Autumn Glen subdivision. So there was always an assumption that there would be some kind of development in this piece of property. There will be multiple ways in and out of the subdivision, so one row will not bear the full brunt of the increased traffic, there being connections, as I mentioned, on Lexington, and also ultimately to North Mount Olive Street, which runs east-west. Housing remains in high demand region-wide, and this addition will partially alleviate the need for new housing for our area. Finally, for the remainder criteria, you see listed on the left side, the proposal does meet these as presented on the preliminary plat for your consideration. Moving on to the future land use map, you see the neighborhood ones, which I've already covered earlier in terms of density. Basically, the key takeaway there is that the proposal does fit within that designation. And I'd like to pass the floor over to Kevin Moore, who will cover more on the traffic impacts. Kevin?
Thank you, Ben. Kevin Moore, City Engineer. Don Hill is the most direct connection from this subdivision, and it's a collector's street with a designated load of nine thousand vehicles per day, including the commons, which has been approved on this street, and then existing traffic counts here over the last month. Those existing traffic counts were seventeen hundred fifty cars a day, and then with the commons, we're just over two thousand vehicles per day. We're expecting this subdivision to add another six hundred and two vehicles per day, but it's important to note that it will connect to Lexington through the Autumn Glen subdivision, as well as the previous phases of Heritage Ranch that'll let it connect to Carl Street. Here you can see the general drainage in the area. Note the floodplain on the northeast corner of the property. The developer's not proposing any fill in the floodplain, but that will partially determine the elevations of the homes in that area. Here's the existing drainage. Most of the site flows south and west to the proposed detention ponds in the bottom-left corner. And then those ponds are also routed through a previous pond on Phase Three of Heritage Ranch. And then a small portion of the site drains north and east to the existing drainage in that area where the floodplain is shown. This is the site as viewed facing north, and I'll let Ben speak to conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So as Kevin mentioned, this is the site. We're looking to the north. First Baptist Church is the building here on the bottom right of the picture. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of this application with four recommended conditions, and I'll cover those now. These are to, first off, to annex the property and rezone that to the R-two zone. Second is to sign a developer agreement regarding the current shortage of electric transformers. The agreement essentially stating that the developer is proceeding at his own risk with this development and understands there might be a shortage of transformers when the time comes for them. The third condition is to require that the engineer of record update the drainage report to reflect commons on the hundred-year water surface elevation. And finally, to require, as I mentioned, the planting of the Leland Cypress trees as a live screen. The trees will not be permitted in the floodplain. With that, we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address this preliminary plat development? Commissioners, your questions or concerns or comments, please?
Kevin? The floodplain area over there, I know we've got the detention basins to the south, but with what runoff is going over there, is it going to affect that existing house? I don't know how the land sets out there, but it looks like part of that floodplain's on their property. Is that going to increase the water? Will it back up on them, or?
That's a good question. No, they are reducing the amount of area that drains northeast, and so it'll be a net improvement flow-wise to that area. And then the drainage that they have in the subdivision routes everything west of that house. So it'll, it'll join that stream drainage area to the west of that property.
Other questions?
Hey, if we can dictate this tree and how far they gotta be spaced, shouldn't we put a symmetric on the height of those trees? I mean, what if they go out there and plant eighteen-inch trees? Can we say they have to be at least six feet tall when they plant them?
Right. That's a great question. That's kind of the beauty of that species of tree, is they're very fast growing. They grow about three feet a year. So initially, they're not going to be the full thirty-foot tall screen, but you know.
I'm just saying, can we just say like at least four feet tall trees? I mean, can we say, I'm just, it's gonna take years.
From the nursery, like how tall they?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can add that to the condition. I think they come standardized, but I mean, I really had to look into what the different sizes are that you could buy.
Yeah, I think you can buy various heights of them. I mean, they're gonna get more expensive the taller you buy, but
Right, right.
I just feel like to really serve its purpose, you don't want to go out there and plant something that's a couple feet tall.
Right. If you wanted to add that to the condition, you can, you can do so if the motion's made to approve.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to make the motion with your conditions?
Yeah, you know, I would make a motion to approve PP twenty-three dash oh one with recommended conditions and add that, you know, a minimum of three feet tall on those trees. I don't think that's too much to ask.
I have a motion on preliminary plat development permit PP twenty-three zero one with the four conditions that's stated in a proposed amendment that the trees planted be a minimum of three feet tall when they're planted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Sally?
Yes.
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 Bernard? Yes.
William?
Yes.
This is approved PP twenty-three dash zero one. We'll go to the Board of Directors on April the fourth. Next item on our agenda is significant development permit SD twenty-three oh three. Ms. Megan, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. This is a significant development permit request to construct a seventy-seven thousand two hundred and ten square foot self-storage facility with twelve associated storage structures and a small office space. This project is located at the thirty-four hundred block of Highway four twelve east, directly behind Tractor Supply. This property was previously rezoned to C two to permit for this use. On the screen is the site plan for the proposed self-storage facility. To the north is, wait, the north is right, this way. And that is also the frontage of the site. The small office space is located here in Building B. This proposal is exceeding the minimum parking required, with parking shown in the frontage, as well as in between some buildings and along the sides of these buildings and in the rears. There is an existing detention area shown here to the north of the site, as well as a proposed detention area outlined in blue here. As a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to file drainage and utility easements via separate instrument per the city engineer. This proposal also includes a six-foot opaque fence surrounding the sides and rear of the lot to screen from those abutting residential uses to the south and west. Additionally, there are no proposed dumpsters for this site, as they have difficulties with them overflowing at these facilities, so they will only be using a commercial roll call cart for the office space. And this is the landscape plan for the proposed development. They will have a six-foot landscape buffer along all sides of the site, as well as interior parking lot landscaping, as you can see with the island shown here along the frontage. And these are the elevations for Building A and B. Those are the larger buildings towards the front. And these are the building elevations for Buildings C through L, which are the other buildings throughout the site. And these are the building elevations for Buildings C through L, which are the other buildings throughout the site. And this is the overall site view. You can see Tractor Supply just here to the north. We have Somerset subdivision down here, and then a residential over here to the west. Staff is recommending approval of this request with one needed condition pertaining to the need to file drainage and utility easements via separate instrument as directed by the city engineer prior to certificate of occupancy issuance. Staff is available for any questions that you have. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address this significant development? Commissioners, do you have questions, concerns, or comments?
A question. Megan, with, from that picture right there, where will the access be to the, to the site?
I was actually gonna point that out on this, but I forgot to. I didn't put it in my talking points, but I was gonna do it. So they're actually gonna be connecting to this access here, and it'll be going out to Highway four-twelve there. So there's an access easement.
Tractor Supply.
Uh huh. Yep, and there's an existing access. So they have it coming out here.
So to get in, you will go through Tractor Supply parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I believe off to the east side of the tractor, on the eastern edge of the Tractor Supply parking lot is the driveway.
You see this?
It actually does not interfere with Tractor Supply parking. There is, the driveway entrance comes in off of four-twelve, and you've gotta bear west on, from that entrance to get into Tractor Supply parking lot.
So yeah, Tractor Supply comes down like this, and then there's the rear of them, and then this is where they're connecting the drive to.
I, I drove out there. There's plenty of room out there.
Cause we had some feedback from Tractor Supply, I think,
On the rezoning.
Concerns about the loading in the back with this coming through there and.
Yeah, I, I drove out there. I don't, I don't, commissioners, I, I drove out there and went all the way back on the back, and unless the trucks come in there when somebody's going in or out of there, yes, naturally, you're gonna have that, just like you do the back of the Walmart supercenter, but I don't see a, a big problem out there personally.
So it's gonna be only buildings, right? They're not, I don't see anything proposed for lots for parking boats or RVs or anything like that. Is that right?
So these buildings up here, um, I think they might be for automobile storage, but they're not. Nope, they're just air-conditioned.
Okay.
So to reiterate, there will be no outside storage?
Nope. Nope, only in the building shown here.
Concerns, commissioners?
Is that landscaping inside or outside of the fence?
Inside.
If there are no other questions or concern by the commissioners, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman? Make a motion to approve significant development permit, SD twenty-three dash oh three.
I have a motion to approve SD twenty-three oh three. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve significant development permit, SD twenty-three oh three. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion is approved. This will go to the Board of Directors on April the fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next item on the agenda is the board and staff approved permits. You each received a copy of that. Is there any comments or questions for staff on those approved permits? Hearing no, hearing no comments on the approved permits, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.